Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this workshop for the Waterbury Board of Education on September 3, 2020. This is a virtual meeting via Zoom. Tonight, we'll start off on the agenda with a silent prayer. Dr. Ruffin, do you have anything to bring to our attention?
Just to keep in remembrance our opening of school for September 8, and to keep all of our students and our staff and our families in your thoughts and your prayers.
Very well, thank you. Thank you. Our next agenda item is Mr. Jason Van Stone will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic.
Public, for which it stands, one nation.
Under God. Liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I've been updated that there are no callers for public speaking. Is that correct? Carrie? You're muted. I didn't hear you.
That's correct.
Thank you. First item for tonight is a request for approval of a college facility request/reservation agreement with the Nuggetuck Valley Community College for the use of a room on campus for the Transition Learning Center Program for Students with Disabilities. Kathy Gabrielson, the floor is yours.
This is our NVCC transition program where we have between 10 and 15 students with a special education teacher and paraprofessional supporting these students as they begin their journey into the college career. We are looking to renew our relationship with NVCC under their new president this year. We've made accommodations to actually have access to two rooms so that we can social distance our students when they are with our teacher and paraprofessional, and when they need to access their online courses from campus rather than home.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just one question, Kathy. Are all students opting to go in person at this point? Or what's the ratio? Are all or some staying at home? Or what's happening?
We have a mix of both, Liz. They are looking at, I believe, I believe it's a 60-40 ratio, but I can confirm that tomorrow and get it to you, where we have students coming in versus staying home. There are a number of students whose most of their classes are online anyway, as they did in the spring. Everybody went online at NVCC. So we've got a mixture, just like we do in our public schools.
So does that impact the budget at all if you've got less students onsite? Or not really?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which conveniently is also for Kathy Gabrielson, on a request for approval of 2020/2021 Special Education Rate Schedule.
When I came into the district last fall, I was provided the rates that we were charging our magnet school students, foster school students from other districts. And some of the rates were very outdated. One, in fact, was just over $6 an hour for some services by special ed teachers in general ed settings. And in looking at that, I started surveying other districts in the local area to see what they were charging and how they were formulating their charges. And I worked with Doreen and the finance office to come up with what you have in front of you at this point in time so that we can be charging more competitive tuition rates for students coming into the city and receiving special education services. A number of them are contingent upon contracts that we have with outside vendors. So dependent on a contract, we would depend, we would charge that hourly rate as it's cited in the contract. But this makes us more competitive and more appropriately and accurately priced in terms of charging our counterparts in other towns sending students in for special education services.
Thank you for taking on that initiative. Tom Van Stone, did I see your hand up?
You did, Mr. President. Thank you through you. I do have a couple of questions. You say competitive. How competitive? Are we still way behind the curve of other districts?
No, we're actually now charging more equitable fees compared to other districts in the area.
Okay, and with that, which would be good news for us competitively, how many openings do we have that we're still chasing to fill?
That I would have to find out. I don't have those numbers. I can find out from Otella and Maloney and WHAMs. But, you know, in terms of special ed kids specifically, we have, we are in the process of gathering their IEPs so that we can actually provide the data to finance to construct the bill. So that would be, that would be another point of data that we could look at as well compared to what we built.
Okay, I would appreciate that information. I think the last I looked, we had over 3,000. So we need to know if there's any openings that we need to fill.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Van Stone, you froze for a little bit, so I didn't hear everything that you said.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the need you have for filling positions is not just being met, but that this board and the superintendent know what positions are not filled so that we can make decisions to try to fill them.
For the magnet school students, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, welcome. Anyone else have a question for Kathy? Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is a request approval of an equipment services agreement with Riddle Incorporated to provide football helmet and equipment reconditioning. I don't see Joe Gorman. Is someone else speaking for him tonight? Darren Schwartz?
I'm gonna pinch, I'm gonna pinch hit for Joe, and I think Darren will pinch hit for my pinch hitting if I hit a foul ball here, but.
I think we're mixing metaphors here. This is football equipment.
Yeah, so I'll try to get into the goal line, and Darren can push it through.
There we go.
Thank you. This is just a football reconditioning. Our prior contract had run its course, so we went out to bid. We've had a couple of rounds and some technical issues with the contract and corp counsel and purchasing, but we ironed all those out. And I think have the successful solution here. It actually is our existing vendor. And the pricing that they have is competitive, was slightly more than the other bidder. But the reason the committee chose this one is that there is other arrangements within the deal as far as how they replace equipment that's theirs at a lower cost or free, whereas the other company coming in would not be replacing Rydell Equipment without another upcharge. So Rydell will continue to replace and repair its equipment for a lower cost. So ultimately, dollars for donations, it's a better deal and works with the existing equipment we have. A vendor we've worked with well and trust, and the athletic directors who are on the committee unanimously agreed with that. So we ask for your approval.
And Rydell is the original equipment manufacturer, correct?
Yeah, the bulk of our equipment is Rydell. There's some others, but the bulk of it is. And that's where the, really the cost benefit comes into play.
Okay. Darren, you gotta save them, or do you do a good job?
We'll see. I think Commissioner Van Stone's gonna ask a question, so we'll see.
Commissioner Van Stone, the floor is yours. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. When I looked through the backup data for this, the cost sheets that came in on the quotes actually had pricing starting in the 1920, not 1920, 2019, 2020 school year. Did we get an extension on those bids? Is it really starting in 2021 and going forward? So when is the three-year taxi going into effect?
It would go into effect now. They were basically, the bid was out for a while. We had this sort of circle that we've been in to get, got some I's and crossed some T's. They're holding their pricing. And basically, they'd jump right into it and finish up any reconditioning that's necessary for the current season. We had already done, gone through the cycle previously, so we're already essentially all set for this year. But this pricing would be for any work that's needed for this season. But I don't think there's really any, frankly, from my conversations with the ADs. And then basically, at the end of the season, they would take the equipment and begin the process right away, holding for those 2019 prices.
So Will, this is kind of like a fixed price contract. We're just kind of holding to a fixed price contract. If we need their services 2021, we have them on board.
Right.
Okay, good. That's a good thing. I just want to clarify what the backup data said. The only other question I have, and it's kind of a, who knows? Maybe we asked it. Sometimes when you deal with these big sports companies, any chance they may want to, say, put up a brand new scoreboard at any of our football site?
Good question.
I know it's not a big contract.
Yeah, I'm sure there may be that chance if the city did those things, but that would be another bid. I'm sure that would have to go out and people would, so that's a whole other process. But I would say the connection that they have to a larger company and the reach that they have to get equipment that we use and we need and can be replaced is certainly a benefit.
I think Commissioner Orso is gonna tell me where I went off track.
Former Director of Purchasing.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The former Director of Purchasing, Mr. Rocco Orso.
If you're, if you're asking if the larger company would donate a scoreboard such as that, it's a conflict of interest, then it's an ethics violation.
Had to ask, there's so many Pepsi scoreboards everywhere and everything else. They get there somehow.
Thank you, Mr. Orso. Anyone else have a question for Will and/or Darren? I don't see anybody shaking our hands. Okay, guys, thank you very much. Our next item, Department of Education's 2019/2020 Final Expenditure Report. Doreen Biola, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Good evening, everybody. This is the final expenditure report, unaudited for fiscal year 1920. As you know, this has been brought to the board every month.
2020, 1920 was 100 years ago.
Fiscal year 1920, so we say 1920, all right. Not the roaring twenties. As you know, I've been coming to the board every month with a report. And as you know, we also have had many transfers that were going into the sinking fund. So actually, I'd like to take you to the last page. And you'll see halfway down, transfer to sinking fund. We did transfers from salaries down into the sinking fund that you had approved. But the remaining balances after the fact of moving salaries, I had done a transfer and I moved the remaining into the sinking fund. We expensed it out and moved it to the transfer sinking fund. As you see, it was 7.3 million. Approximately 4 million of that was savings through the COVID-19 pandemic. And the remainder of that was attrition. We had a lot of big balance, not just because of COVID, but also because in the sub-line, we just didn't have many subs to fill. And as far as the COVID goes, you remember we had a big savings in transportation due to negotiation. So that 7.3 million will go into a transfer fund for education to be used towards a capital type of improvements and projects. Because as you know, the city really doesn't fund capital funds for us. We really get very minimal. So this was an idea from finance a few years back to start building up our sinking fund. So overall, moving the funds there, we just have a small balance of $7,500 surplus. And then the other remaining funds underneath, you'll see, we didn't touch because that was something we knew we wouldn't, and we offset the current year budget for 2020-21. So if anybody has any questions, I will answer.
Any questions for Doreen from anyone? I don't see anybody waving, so going once, going twice. We're gonna move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is a request for approval of the submission of the Connecticut State Department of Education's FY 2020 Alliance and Priority School District Grants. Ms. Doreen Biola and Darren Schwartz are our hosts for this part of the discussion.
Yep, thank you, Commissioner. Again, this is our alliance grant for this year. We actually have submitted the grant through the state's e-grant system. We had a short window from when it was given to us to submit it. There was an increase. We went from 29 million to a little over 36,473,359. Some of the additions, it's basically the same items. Some of the additions are in curriculum. We also added 14 new social workers for social-emotional. And we included some of our turnaround schools' teacher salaries where we budgeted with the increase. Not much has changed other than really those items. And as you know, we have in here the elementary curriculum for math that Darren may want to speak of. But that is really the overall increase to the grant. And it, I will apologize that I had put down here that it would have gotten submitted on 8/20 board meeting. However, there was such a short turnaround, we were never able to get it to you on time for that 8/20 meeting, so it's coming just a little late.
You're forgiven. Darren, do you have anything you want to add? No?
Yeah, so Doreen mentioned math. There's also additional information in there about intervention for math as well. But we also were able to add in some of our fine arts curriculum that allowed us to go virtual for the upcoming year through the new alliance monies.
Great, thank you. Anyone have questions for Doreen and/or Darren?
You know, I, through the chair, I just had a question in terms of the impact of, of course, the pandemic and the changes that we're forced to make in terms of distance learning. And I didn't really see any difference to this application than prior applications as far as distance learning is concerned. So am I missing that? Or that's a different, that's in a different place?
Yeah, we use the ESSER grant, which was the Federal Cares Act grant. It is where we're budgeted for distance learning, PPE, using also some of the surplus that we did have in the 2019-20 budget where we were trying to get ahead of the curve on some purchases. So yeah, and then there's an additional funding coming from the coronavirus relief fund from the governor. We haven't received that yet, but that would also be towards the distance learning, PPE, and other items related to the hybrid model.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Karen Harvey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, through the chair. Doreen, just a quick question. The social workers that are planned in the grant, is that in addition to what we have? Or is that maintaining what we have?
No, those would be new. So if you see, if you look through the grant, you'll see social workers a couple times. There's ones that were existing that are for special education. These 14 new are for social-emotional, obviously in light of the pandemic, but a need, even if it wasn't the pandemic, I think we need these additional.
All right, that's great. Thank you, Doreen.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Anyone else have a comment or question? Seeing no hands, we'll move on. The next agenda item, a request approval of a music mentoring services at Waterbury Arts Magnet School with Waterbury Symphony Orchestra. Mr. Darren Schwartz, the floor is yours.
Good evening. We're proud to be able to partner with the Waterbury Symphony Orchestra again, even in the current environment, to be able to provide students at WHAMs specific mentoring in multiple areas, including strings, high strings, low strings, bands, woodwinds, brass percussion for the first semester and the second semester. And Waterbury Symphony Orchestra has made arrangements to be able to reach not only our kids in person, but also our virtual students so that they're not left out if they've chosen to stay at home. And, you know, we're proud of this relationship. And we were happy to make this work this year with Holly Maxence, directly with the Waterbury Symphony Orchestra to make sure that our students wouldn't lose services in the upcoming school year. Even though they're doing it virtual, they are ready to come back in into the school when we're ready to have increased visitors. And we made sure of that in the agreement.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Darren? All right, Darren, thank you very much. Next item is a request for approval of a contract with ESS to provide substitute teachers and paraprofessional staffing. Doreen Biola, is this yours, or is this Will Clark's?
I'm gonna pass the baton, or I'm gonna pass the football to Will Clark.
Good move.
Well, I'll take the baton. My track career was more stellar than my football career. So this is an agreement we're recommending for a company to engage in our substitute staffing. This is really geared towards teachers, but the way we crafted the RFP, it leaves open an opportunity for some targeted paraprofessional support in a substitute capacity if necessary. So we do have pricing for that, but frankly, that's not the main thrust. The main thrust is the teacher piece. We've had some issues over the years filling substitute teaching roles and finding people to fit the right slots that we need and expertise in filling those areas. And we had met with or heard about the services that were coming along, and other districts have been experimenting with this. So we've done some due diligence, really over the last year and a half, looking into our current system and how that works and some of the challenges we might have with it, and also looking at what could be out there in the private sector to perhaps partner with and help us with. So we put out an RFP a number of months ago that, at the time Lee Palmer and I had begun, but then really I worked in earnest with Juan Mendoza and Lisa Dunn in the HR department. And then we rolled in Doreen from the Finance Department to make sure we had that lens on it as well. And we talked to a number of districts who have gone in this direction, Manchester and Norwalk specifically among them have done it in the last year or so, and put together an RFP to meet these needs and received responses back from four vendors. We had a committee that reviewed them and did interviews, and then second round interviews, and then some pricing requests for reduction. And ultimately, the committee came forward with the recommendation of ESS, which was competitive in their rate and lowered their rate in the negotiation phase. And we thought they were the best for a number of reasons. Mainly, their presence now in Connecticut with Norwalk, New Milford, Manchester, and growing. So they already have a footprint and a presence. They're a national company that is building up more in the Northeast. So they have a capacity here, they have in Connecticut talent. They also utilize the same technology we use with the Frontline and ASOP and are familiar with Lawson. So there'd be basically a turnkey operation where they can use our technology and kind of mirror what we're doing and then add some of their techniques to it. One of the other big benefits of their proposal was there's no finder's fee or fights over recruitment. So if we find, if they find someone who's a good substitute, works well for us, we can actually recruit them as a teacher, full-time teacher with no penalty, and hire them immediately. Using the company also helps in the sense that, from a cost-effective standpoint, while we have the contractual fees that would be in addition to our paying a substitute straightaway by ourselves, we get the cost benefits of not having the workers comp, unemployment, and other employee-associated fees. And we basically get a number of bodies through them that we would otherwise have to employ to really manage this from a full standpoint. Right now, we basically just hire people who meet the minimum standards. This is more of a recruitment, training, support that comes with it, including online, which is one of the other pieces that the committee really worked at post-COVID, was that they have, they recruit and have staff available and substitutes available who would be skilled in online or distance learning as well. There's really a no cost to us, except if we use it. So the cost is only associated with when we actually utilize substitute teachers. So what we recommended is a contract amount not to exceed, which is under our current spend for substitutes as we grow into this hopefully relationship. And I think it also comes at a very opportune time during our interview process with Juan and Lisa. In the interviews, there could be, I think, a great collaboration where we can maybe learn from them a little bit about some of their recruitment strategies, how they leverage Frontline, how they leverage ASOP in ways that perhaps we're not fully utilizing. So we pay for these services, we have these services that we use for this and other things, but we don't always get the most out of it just because we don't have the capacity or the time to really spend to become experts. They're experts in it, and they're willing to share that expertise through this project and perhaps grow it in some other areas over time, including the paraprofessionals, if that's something we choose to do. But for now, it's very substitute teacher focused. If we get this approved, they would have committed to jump in immediately and essentially be boots on the ground in September. We'll start off the year with our normal substitute work through our HR department and have substitutes ready. This company would be, if we choose to go with it, would come in. They would actually hire any of those substitutes that we recommend, and then they would be doing their recruitment to find additional subs that meet the needs of our district. So basically, we'd be getting a full-time substitute recruitment trainer and support advocate for this longstanding need. And we'd be able to manage the financial side of it. We'd be able to manage, if we didn't like one of them, they would go. And where we need, where we have the need, we'd be able to dictate and so forth. So we still maintain all of the kind of management control, if you will, through the contract. But they take on the liability and all of the grunt work of finding the people and getting them for us. So I'll disclose with, you know, talking to the other districts that have started with it, it's been successful for them. They report some cost efficiencies and all the things I described working out well. And our committee recommends them.
Thank you, sir. I saw Melissa Serrano Adorno's hand up first. Melissa?
Thank you, Mr. President. Will, I have a question. So you said these substitutes, they'll, they'll be more like teachers, not like paraprofessionals?
Yeah, so basically, what the RFP commissioner was, was asking them to be able to supply us with substitute teachers. But we also put in a subpart of the RFP which asked them if they could also give us a price for supplying substitute paraprofessionals. So there's an element of the contract that we could trigger. So it would only be filling in and substitute, just like we do substitute teachers. It'd be adding a potential layer of support if we choose to go with it. So we'd have a price of that, so we know what that is. And if we chose to, if we needed to, if we had some issues with staffing, which from time to time, as you know, we have had with the civil service testing and other things. So this would be a potential resource for us to link to on a short-term basis or a substitute scenario where we might need a body in while someone's on leave or something like that.
Perfect.
Alyssa, we lost you. You're frozen. I'm gonna move on to Commissioner Jason Van Stone. If we get you back, I'll put you back up. Commissioner Jason Van Stone, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Will, I think I heard the answer in your explanation. I just wanted to confirm it because.
When I saw the 1.5 mil number, uh, not to exceed and then the total. But that includes the salaries of these people that'll be working. This isn't another million and a half. On top of what we are already generally budgeting, which is already, in my opinion, an astronomical number. For substitutes. So this is just essentially bringing in a third party who's gonna manage that entire thing. And we're gonna write them a check. They're gonna pay their people either as contractors or however they do it. But this is not a, a, a dollar amount on top of what we're already paying.
Uh, that's correct. And the way it basically works, uh, inside baseball here is. Their money is essentially the percentage cost on top of the subpay. That's where they make their, their money. So where these bids actually come down, when you really get to the, the, the meat of it. It was what is that percentage markup? That each company was charging. So everyone is sort of agreeing to what the base rate could or should be for a substitute. So it's that markup. And all of the bids were somewhere in the, the high twenties, low mid 30% range. So you're basically paying for all their overhead and, and they give some benefits to these folks and things like that. Uh, but then we're not having to pay for the staff to manage it ourselves. Um, and the other elements, uh, the manpower and losing, uh, the liability associated with any unemployment. Workers comp injuries, uh, and things like that. They're their employees. So if they do something wrong, you sue them, you don't sue us kind of thing. Um, so we get out of all of that. So in the end of the day, while you're technically paying more for the same sub. Um, when you look at the whole package. The argument is, and I think the reality is, you're paying less overall and getting, uh, a better product, a one that you can manage.
And is the hope, because I know far too often we have classes going without. You know, sometimes a sub at all, is, is part of the rationale here that this company will be better at. A, finding qualified subs and. Be making sure we get them in our classrooms.
Yes, thi- this is basically their business. This is what they do. So they're experts at this. Whereas we basically are. In addition to everything else we do, we're trying to. Basically put out an ad in the newspaper and find subs. They're actually finding subs, training subs. And what they do is try to find people who may be retired and just want a few extra bucks and keep busy. People who are trying to get into the business and looking for an opportunity. So we'll be able to hopefully leverage that latter category and maybe get them into our pipeline. So it actually could serve as a secondary pipeline of recruitment. Um, for us to live, you know, feel and touch and see some folks that we could ultimately hire. Uh, they also have a lot of techniques with respect to minority recruitment, which is a part of our RFP. Local recruitment, which is a part of our RFP. So they've made a number of commitments to that as well.
And last question, um. The document noted a couple of other schools that, or districts use them, Norwalk, Manchester, New Milford. Um, Brooklyn, Portland. So essentially their pool of subs, any district that is utilizing them for their services. Would have access to that. So if I wake up on any given Tuesday morning and I'm a substitute teacher. Um. Does that mean? I could have calls from four different districts and I have to pick, or do you know if? If some kind of dispatcher at the company says, all right, Jason, uh, you're going to Brookfield today. You're going to Waterbury today. What, how does that work?
Um, it, it could work a little bit like that, but in our current system we have, we use the ASOP system, which they also utilize. So it essentially has a number of layers to it. Where you can sort of pick where you, where you'd rather teach, high school, middle school, elementary, whatever. Um, and also goes the other way. So principals can actually request you. So it's kind of a substitute dating service, if you will. Um, so they have the added layer of maybe having some other clients out there. So they might. Behind the scenes be trying to match up some of those. Um, but you know, we'd be able to select who we believe are the best and that we believe fit Waterbury the best. And sure, Norwalk would do the same. Manchester does the same and so forth. Um, and then ideally what you do is you eventually, you know, you find some, some partners and patterns. The person likes working at that particular school. And it's a nice match. If there's a long-term sub in particular that works really well. You know, someone's out for say, um, uh, a birth of a child. And if everybody likes everybody, it all works out. And basically that person just keeps getting assigned every day. Um, so I think as, as time goes by, we'll build up a lot of that. We'll start with them working with our existing groups. So presumably a lot of them would, would stay and, and remain connected. Uh, and then frankly, they might get some additional benefits out of the deal. Um, medical and so forth. And we'd be able to then be pulling in from the other resources that, that this company brings in. So we'd still be able to do that dating game as well.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Will.
Thanks, guys. Uh. Commissioner Serrano Adorno, before you froze and left us, did you have anything else you wanted to ask?
I do. Thank you. Um, Will, uh, will those substitutes be able to cover the special education and the BDLC classes? If the teachers are out? Um, as Jason and you have mentioned, sometimes the classrooms. Um, don't have teachers and they're, or they don't have enough subs. So sometimes the staffs are the ones that are left to. Um, kind of handle the classroom. So, um, or do they need a special qualification to be able to teach those classes?
Um, well. We obviously would rather fill the specialty rooms with people who have certification or the skillset to do those. There's a little bit of relaxing with respect to substitute teachers. But one of the value adds of, of this and, and one of the reasons we did the, the, the RFP. Was again, that they, you know, have the ability to do recruitment and focus their strategies on where our sort of weaknesses might be. And so they would be out looking and recruiting if they know we have more shortages in special ed. For a person who has a special ed certification or the BDLC background. Who just, for whatever reason, doesn't want to be a full-time teacher. Uh, or may not be in that place in their life where they, they are ready to do that or whatever. And so that, we're gonna gain that. And we've had, as you well know, we've had difficulty staffing those positions generally. And we've had a secondary problem staffing them on a sub basis. This still, by the way, does not eliminate our other. You know, tools in the toolbox. You know, we could. Still do other elements like splitting classes, which may not be ideal. Um, teacher teaches an extra class for a stipend under the teacher contract may not be ideal, et cetera. So our hope is that with this would add that additional capacity to target. Some of that recruitment and some of these stubborn trouble areas, special ed. Um, some of our career tech areas. Um, uh, some of our, um, language, uh, BLL areas and so forth. Um, and that, you know, we could really dive into these areas more and, and leverage their, their expertise and maybe have some more success.
Thank you, Will. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Commissioner Karen Harvey, you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. President. Will, just, I, I think the question was answered, but I just want to confirm that. The preference of selection. When they're qualified, et cetera, are we going to look first at our local? Uh, group?
Yes. Yes. So what we did, Commissioner Harvey, we were very sensitive to that. And, um, one of the things the committee, I know, um, as we talked about, it took into account is. We put in the RFP. Um, the requirement that they come back with a proposal that. Uh, among many other things, but had specific, uh, focus on minority recruitment and hiring and local hiring. And so one of the tells in these things is what's the response come back like? I mean, we basically are giving you a tip-off of where we have some concerns. And what do you come back with? And, and a number of the companies did really focus on that and ESS is one of those. Where, where they really focused and committed and showed us some of their experience in other places and the types of. Relationships that they seek to make. In the community as they look to start recruiting and doing their own job peers and so forth. So they don't just sort of come in and throw it out in the newspaper. Uh, they would come in, work with us. I'm sure they would. Uh, take advice from commissioners and board members and meet with those community groups, church groups, you know.
Right.
The, the areas where they can maybe find some of these folks. And again, there, there's a whole potentially untapped population.
That's right.
That just doesn't necessarily want to work full-time, but is willing to work on a maybe more ad hoc-y, sub-basis way. Um, and so it's finding those people, but it, it takes work to do that. And so they, and their part of their proposal was committing to do that work and make those connections. And really zero in on understanding that we have that desire for local. Because we do want to ultimately leverage this both for subs, but also for recruitment.
That's right. That's right. That's right.
And they recognize that.
Thank you. Thank you, Will. So last question then. So we will handle. Uh. The calling, you know, if there's a need, you're still gonna handle that down. You know, at, uh, 2:36, correct? But the other stuff. Go ahead.
It basically becomes a bit of a partnership. Uh, and a lot of this ends up really being frankly leveraging the system better. So that we'd ideally, a little more training on our part, a little more leveraging of ASOP and frontline. To really use the technology to make these, again, the sort of dating game analogy I'm using. Uh, to connect the dots that we need to, to find the right matches, if you will. So they will be a big part of that, but we basically maintain veto power and, uh, steering power. Uh, to make those adjustments. If a principal tells us, hey. Don't send Harvey back. We can, we can, we can work with them and work with the system to make that so. But if they're saying, hey, look, I really am looking for this type of person. Then we can dig in and make that connection as well.
Okay. All right. That sounds good. Thank you, Will. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Commissioner Ann Sweeney and then Commissioner Liz Brown.
Well, um, I'm gonna go back to the Connecticut towns. Um, and I appreciate that you reached out to them to get some background. Um, but these are generally smaller districts and I'm gonna guess they don't have, need the volume of substitutes on a daily basis. That maybe we need. Did you go out to any other, um. Customers of this company? In smaller districts may, and bigger districts outside of Connecticut to find out? Have they supplied them well?
Yeah, we did. And, um, they actually have worked in Bridgeport in the past as well. Um, as you well know, that's a bit of a mixed bag when you do a reference check in Bridgeport. Um, but, uh, so they do have experience with larger communities and with urban communities. Admittedly from their, uh, ex, from their, um, business model and, and national presence. That's more in the South and the West. Um, and frankly, that's a bit true of, of the other national bidders. Um, this is a bit of a new phenomenon coming up to the Northeast where a bit more of a unionized and secular kind of. Uh, area that doesn't do a lot of subcontracting type of work, uh, in these areas, but, um. So they, they have had, uh, many larger, um, uh, companies primarily down south. That we were able to get some good reports from. Um, and the work they, they did in Bridgeport, I think I would. Conclude it was a bit more of a, a political change of power than it was, that, than it was, uh, anything that they necessarily. Uh, did wrong, um, seemed to me. Um, but they have, had experience, uh, in urban as well as, uh, the, the smaller test. Norwalk was a, was a similar one to us in the sense that we were on a similar timeframe. So we did, we had, did have a lot of conversations with Norwalk because we were both going through the RFP process around the same time. So we shared a lot of thoughts of what they did, the questions they asked and the due diligence they did. So not only do we have ours going, but because they were sort of a step and a half ahead of us. We were able to leverage, um, uh, from their folks. Juan had a good personal relationship with someone there. Uh, and I did, had one as well with a different person from Norwalk. So we really leveraged that. Uh, and Manchester as well, just because we had some personal connections. So, um, we really relied on their experience, which is more recent quite a bit. But we did check some of the larger towns and they had some experience with them as well.
And just one, one last question. In, in terms of them supplying us substitutes that we request. At, at what point do we look at it and say? Um, you haven't kept up with the contract in terms of sending us the substitutes we need?
Um, I think that's gonna be an ongoing. Piece of the puzzle. Um, you know, obviously we'll see how it goes and when it starts, if approved. Um, so that we've got to monitor. I think frankly. Their concern is the opposite, that we might be too conservative with our budget issues. Um, and, and fall back on the other tricks that we have in the, in, in the toolbox here or other tools. Um, and, and normally what they get is an aggressive, uh, uh. Fill rate expectation. Um, and we have that, but we also do need to, to, to Mr. Vanstone's point. We want to be cognizant of our budget piece and, and frankly, we are very focused. On, um, teacher attendance issues and the other side of this coin. Um, and making sure that, you know, we're really focused on our full-time staff. Making sure we are, you know, in an environment that, that has folks working, um, and supported. Um, and, and then hopefully ideally reducing the need for subs. Um, and, and then it would be a more focused and, and finite area. But, uh, we would keep a close eye on it. The reason Doreen was, was on the committee was for just that. And, uh, the reason we picked 1.5 versus three, uh, which is the budget number, was just that. We want to hedge our bet a little bit and make sure we don't outsmart ourselves.
Okay. I'm just, I'm a little concerned about, you know. We call them in or however we contact them and say, we need six substitutes today. Here's what we need. And they come back and say, well, we managed to find two. That's my concern. So. At what point does that become enough of a problem for us to say, you know what? You, you're not, you're outside the contract now. Things aren't going well. Where's, where's our comfort level?
That would be that day, I think, would be the problem. Um, you know, not to say that we don't have that same problem on many days, but.
Yes, I agree.
You know, that's, that's really not our expectation. And I think this is one that we would watch. You know, very closely at the outset and in the transition and ramp up. And make sure we have a number of principals that are working with us and on top of that as well. Um, and I think everyone wants a win-win here, uh, and that's the goal, but. You know, we, we certainly don't want, um. You know, an anchor here, uh, and, and, and to again, outsmart ourselves and make it more complicated and not get a result. And be paying more for less, if you will. So, uh, the goal here is to increase the fill rate and have more subs available and have more subs to choose from that are higher quality. Um, and if that doesn't prove to be the reality, then shame on us and back to the drawing board.
Thank you, Will. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Commissioner Elizabeth Brown, the floor is yours.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Um, I'm glad we're, we're past the Rolodex, the, the substitute teachers on the Rolodex. I'm glad to hear that we're moving. Uh, seriously though, I see in the contract it says two onsite managers. Now, what do you, what do we anticipate their role will be and where will they be and?
Yeah, I think that, Liz, that's more that they're dedicating those folks to the contract and our service. Um, you know, I'm sure they would. Go wherever we told them to go. They don't necessarily have to be physically with us, but they're dedicated.
Managers.
Yeah, that means that they're, uh, they're dedicated to our work. And working with us.
So not necessarily.
Jason's point. It's not Norwalk and Waterbury. And maybe I'll slip one here and slip one there and keep both guys happy. They're for us. They're dedicated to our contract.
So, all right, that, thank you for the clarification. I was thinking they were coming to work every day somewhere and had an office.
Yeah, I think there'll be quite a bit of, yeah, I think particularly the startup, there's gonna be quite a bit of interplay. With our current, um, part-time staff who engages in this and with Lisa Dunn, who helps oversee a lot of it. And probably with a, a, a core group of principals to make sure we're all on the same page. And that our communication is correct and, and the terms we use are correct and, and the frequency of meeting. The other beauty of it is, Liz, with the technology, I think we'll have a lot more reporting. And data to review on a regular basis. So. Like we're doing this virtually, I think, you know, that may be a bit of the future with this contract. But that data is really gonna be critical for us to better understand and leverage for our needs and, and uses. And we're looking forward to, um, mining that skill from, uh, from them and sharing that with our staff. Um, so if someday this doesn't work out and we bring it back in-house, we're gonna. Try to get all these skills.
I'm hopeful. And the other, the last question is, in terms of the, uh. When a teacher becomes a, like a permanent sub and takes over. Uh, are they gonna be compensated according to the schedule that we've set up? So all that.
Yes. So the way the contract works basically is. Is more that markup piece. The ESS doesn't much care what we pay as the base rate.
I see. Okay.
So if we choose to, if we believe that, that, that rate is not as competitive and it, and this deal, it's slightly adjusts our rate a little bit. As you know, the long-term sub is a lot more competitive than the.
Right.
The day sub. Um, but if, if we decide to adjust that more to be more competitive with some surrounding towns, basically the markup stays the same. So the total number of what we would pay goes up. Um, based on the base, the markup doesn't correspondingly go up. So we'd have to be smart about that and think that through from our total budget perspective. But we can certainly look at that from a competitive example. The one thing we know for sure is. We've got the company locked into their rate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? As I remember from my professional life, a chapter ago. Everybody's for change until it affects them. And outsourcing is fun. Our next agenda item, Will, you're back up again. It is item seven. Use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments.
Uh, so we just have a couple on here today and frankly, these are more or less placeholders. Um, trying to be cognizant of making sure we get things in, in advance and frankly. Oh, and, and some of these other things, but we wanted to at least get them in and cover the base. The Sacred Heart Swimming one, I had touched. The Sacred Heart swimming one, I had touched base with Commissioner Jason Vanstone earlier because this one did come in a bit late, but that's really no fault of Sacred Hearts or anyone else's other than we're really a little bit still up in the air with CIAC and the state. It does appear that conditioning continues. I would be shocked if swimming doesn't happen altogether. The football and other things might be a little, continue to be a bit of a question mark, we'll see. But we didn't want to, you know, stop their conditioning opportunity. Also, our teams can, are beginning that as well. So this one is a bit retroactive to Monday. But Sacred Hearts used that pool before and it's essentially the same terms.
Thank you. Any questions for, Will? Okey dokey, Will. The next one is yours also. Item number eight, use of school facilities by outside organizations.
Yep, I think I got ahead of myself there. Thank you. And that was Sacred Heart, so that's.
Okay, you covered both. You're very efficient, thank you.
I'm trying.
Item number nine, Commissioner, I mean Superintendent Dr. Ruffin, the floor is yours for your update.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, Commissioners. How are you this evening? I am going to try to give you the latest and newest information. I'll, I'll start with today and some site visits at Willby High School and Hopeville and Gilmoreton, where we were able to see some of the very distinct changes that have occurred on that campus in preparation for other students for the new school year. You can see the schools have been really maintained to a level where you're going to see a noticeable difference. You're going to see a lot of signage in the schools. The halls are marked very clearly with signage to allow students and staff and really clear direction about where to enter and how to enter stairwells and exit stairwells. And you're also going to see that some of the classrooms are so personalized. I think our students are going to feel that welcome once they walk into their classrooms. Some of the teachers have actually marked their students' desks with their own personalized names and supplies and materials are there waiting for them. And it was really interesting to see that some of the desks also were equipped with the headsets. Because you know, the world that we're entering is going to be virtual, whether we're in person or we're going to be at home learning. So we got a chance to see some of that firsthand today at those three schools. That's not the only schools that we visit. We visited quite a few schools during the professional development days. Our, our teachers and staff have started coming in since August 14th with our new teachers. We have over 130 of the new teachers that were there during professional development. And of course, the following week, August 24th, began new teacher workshops, professional development. And I want to commend our professional development team, our offices of talent management and professional development with Jessica Casio and Lisa Romano and our interim director of human capital, Juan Mendoza. They did an excellent job. This is the first time I believe that we've ever had such a comprehensive professional development calendar for, you know, over two weeks, two and a half weeks of professional development in preparation for an unprecedented school year. Likewise, they work collectively with all of the members of the senior cabinet, Mr. Schwartz, who's also here this evening, and our assistant superintendent as well as others in preparing that professional development calendar. Mr. Clark did an outstanding job with the safety and health protocols. You know, we've, we've had a team working on distribution of computers. So Will Zuda has done an outstanding job with his technicians who have been really instrumental in doing so many multiple tasks this summer and since March actually, in assuring that not only were computers available and distributed, but they were also helping people with access and helping people with, you know, delivery at various schools and various school sites. I can go on and on and, and, but I just felt that it was so important to acknowledge the great work that the team has done and getting us to this date. The reopening plans are all published on our website. And I've had several town halls to be able to discuss the reopening. And the last reopening plan, which is the, our, our hybrid model, of course, with a schedule. Schedules have been published. This schedule will let everyone know the time that the school officially starts. And we all know that the opening of school will have much flexibility as we anticipate what our bus routes are going to be. We're going to have opportunities to monitor the ridership. And I, I just want to tell you that as much detail as we've put into the plans, that after day one, we're going to change some things again. Because we're constantly going to debrief, we're going to assess what's working really well, what's not working well. We're going to go back to the drawing board and we'll take care of it and we'll communicate what we're going to be doing differently so that people are not confused. But it is a challenge and it will continue to be a challenge. We anticipate approximately 40% of our students returning for in-person. We, we know that we have approximately 60% that have already signed up for the virtual academy. Our teachers have been connecting with their students and their families. And our teacher computers have arrived. But what we have done, because they arrived only this week and they have to be uploaded with the correct materials, the correct resources and software, what we've done is distributed computers that we currently have so that our teachers will begin on September 8th with the instruction because they will be provided technology to start with. After the new computers that were purchased with the teachers have been prepared with all of the uploading of all of the resources that they need, they're going to submit the, the loner computer and get their new computers so that we can move forward. The idea behind that is we wanted all of the teachers to have what they needed on day one to begin the online virtual instruction with their students, whether students were in person or online. And that is going to happen. And teachers were able to come by today and they'll be able to do that tomorrow as well, to be able to get their, their computer if they need one. And essentially what, what that means is some of the teachers had computers without cameras. And we want to make certain they have the tools that they need so that instruction can move forward on September the 8th without any, without any problems of, without that being one of the problems. We know that even with the best laid plans, there's still a lot of questions and we're available to answer them. We receive questions every day. We have a team that's providing the answers. The office staff here in Superintendent's office, I mean, I'm very pleased that they have taken a large number of calls and they've responded respectfully and will continue to do so throughout this process. Our schools are, are best able to provide some of the information. And, and we hope that our families will continue to connect with their school teachers as well as the principals for ongoing questions that they may have about the reopening of schools. But every plan that we have, every updated plan is currently on the website, including the protocols for notification in the event that someone has COVID-19. And I'll cover that very briefly with the board members, but I did send you a copy of, of that. And then finally, I'm going to discuss very briefly with you on the meal service, which was the last document that we have prepared, but it was also one of the most challenging ones to prepare. Because not only were we preparing meals for the students that were coming in person, we were also bound by some rules and guidelines and laws as well as how to provide meals for our students that are going to be learning only virtually. So I'll, I'll cover that and I'll also ask Will to, 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 to fill in because there's a lot of pieces to that as well. So let me talk a little bit about the protocol for notification. Many of our questions were posed during many of the town halls. What happens if someone has COVID? Unfortunately, we had a practice of that in reality last week. And, and, and while it was even before the complete protocols were, were drafted, it certainly allowed us to be able to examine what those practices are and to be able to put them into communication mode as soon as possible. When we are publishing any of these protocols, this work is not being done in a salop. It's not being done just by Waterbury Public Schools. It's being done with a team of people across the, across the city of Waterbury, including the health department, including the health and, and emergency response team, healthcare providers, as well as the State Department of Education. And, and while that has been a really good collaboration effort, we can't publish something just because it came out of the State Department of Ed. We can take that as guidance, we bring it to Waterbury, we see how it fits Waterbury's plan. We run it by a lot of different experts. We problem solve it here with the senior cabinet, with the schools. And then we develop the best plan that we believe will be implemented in Waterbury. But always with the guidance of all of these other entities that I've mentioned. And some of it is, is complex. And, and once we have a final version or as close to the final version as we can get it, then we put it out there. So sometimes people think that it should come out a lot sooner, but it's not going to come out until it's ready to come out because oftentimes people don't read the second, third, fourth or fifth version. And so that's why it was critically important that we get it as close to what we are going to be implementing when school starts. But we know there are going to be revisions along the way. So I'll go over very briefly, but, or as much detail as you would like, if you have questions about the guidelines that were published and that all parents and students and everyone can see this online. And it's called Guidelines and Communication Protocol for Students, Staff Members With Confirmed COVID-19 Or COVID-19 Symptoms, Or Family Members With Confirmed Cases. And, and so it becomes quite complex because one plan does not fit all. We advise everyone, our staff members as well as our students and our parents, if you're feeling ill, don't come to school. That's, that's, that's very, very important that people should not feel obligated to show up if they don't feel well. And then of course, we've listed signs and symptoms of what could possibly be COVID-19 symptoms. But we also know that this virus can also be asymptomatic and we are aware of that. And that's why we, we, we take every precaution to advise people that the wearing of masks is, is, it's not a suggestion. It's important and it's something that we all need to do if we're going to be entering the school building or the bus. So if a student or staff member is confirmed case of COVID-19, a parent or staff member must provide documentation from their healthcare provider. And then the following protocol will be activated immediately. So every time you see this document, you will see that there are some key people that are probably not going to get any sleep in 2020. And that's Mr. Clark and myself. Because if someone has contracted COVID-19 and they test positive, they are to tell their principal. So we're talking school level here. You know, if it's not just, if it's not the school level and it becomes, let's say, central office or any of our other buildings, they tell their immediate supervisor. But I'm going to give it to us today in context of the school. So the staff member immediately tells their principal. And then the principal will notify the nurse. The nurse will notify the health department. The school principal will notify our chief operating officer. Will notify me. Will notify our senior staff. The district will ensure proper sanitation of the affected classroom or the areas that, that were included in the, in the space that individual worked in or attended school. In either place, timely notification will be made to school community via various communication methods while maintaining confidentiality. That doesn't mean that if it happens at one school, that everybody in the entire district gets it. It means that that school gets it. And of course, in collaboration with the city of Waterbury and the city's director of public health and the school medical advisor, will make appropriate decisions regarding a class or school closure. And that's a decision that I would make in collaboration with all of the above. If a student or a staff member develops symptoms during the school day, then the same procedure will follow. However, that student will be also brought into the isolation room by the nurse or the nurse's aide. That does not mean that because the student exhibits symptoms of COVID-19, that the student has contracted COVID-19. But it does mean that the student will be going home. If it's a staff member, the staff member will then have to leave immediately and go home. If it's an emergency, we're going to call EMS. If the individual is confirmed COVID-19, the same process would, would follow. At either case, if a child goes home or a staff member goes home not feeling well, they're not returning to school unless this documentation from a health provider is saying that they are symptom-free, that they're not, they're not carriers of COVID-19, if not contracted COVID-19. And they must be free of fever without any kind of medication for at least 24 hours before they can return to, to work or to school. If a student or staff member has been in contact with others, the contact tracing takes place. It takes place immediately after the person notifies the principal and then, and then the health department is notified. There's a process in Waterbury to do contract tracing. It was applied when, when we had our, our case of COVID-19. And that means people that are in close proximity or were in close proximity for over 15 minutes of, of that individual. And, and it becomes particularly important if they were in close proximity to that individual and they did not have a mask. So it's not only people that they may have been in close contact with, let's say, in their classroom, but it could be in their classroom or anywhere else they may have gone and been associated with someone if they did not have a mask on. And based on that contact tracing, those individuals in contact with this person who has tested positive with COVID-19 will be contacted and they must self-quarantine for 14 days. We have a process not only for, for this scenario that I've just read, but we have a confirmed positive case scenario. We have a possible suspected case scenario. We have symptoms and close proximity with individuals diagnosed with COVID-19 scenario. And we have no symptoms and close contact to an individual diagnosed with COVID-19 scenario. All of which come with some kind of notification where appropriate to the people that have been in contact with that individual, as well as notification to the school or the, the building that that person might have, have been working. A situation that could merit my closing down a classroom or closing down a school or closing down the entire district will be determined in collaboration with the city of Waterbury, our public health department, the school medical advisors or the city's medical advisors as well. And from there, with the information that we have gathered, a decision will be made whether there's no closure, there's partial closure, there's closure only of the school, or there's closure of an entire district and how long. And, and I'm going to stop there in case you have questions because every scenario brings about other questions that the team will be asking ourselves as we move through this process. We've made certain in these protocols that we've, that we've put a definition next to close contact because sometimes people think that just because they were in a room with an individual or they just passed by that individual or they know that individual, that, that could mean that they are a close contact. So we defined it in, 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 in the protocols. We said close contact is defined as spending at least 15 minutes within one day, within six feet of a person with a confirmed diagnosis of COVID-19. within six feet of a person with a confirmed diagnosis of COVID-19 during their infectious period or having direct contact with an infected person's droplets. That is cough or a sneeze. And we've also identified some severe symptoms that would lead to calling the EMS immediately. And that, those symptoms would include trouble breathing or persistent pain or pressure in the chest, new confusion, confusion or inability to wake or stay awake, blush lips or face. Those symptoms are not to be taken lightly and would call for emergency assistance immediately. We identified what an isolation looks like and what quarantine would be. And with that in mind, I'll stop there in case you have questions about those protocols, which, which we have given to all of the schools and we have also made certain that principals had quality time to go over them with their staff as well as we sent those out to our parents and our families.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Anybody have questions for Dr. Ruffin or comments? Commissioner Karen Harvey, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Ruffin, the protocols are great, but what I'm wondering is, you know, I hope that once someone is identified, they're not feeling well, et cetera. They need to go into the isolation room, et cetera. I hope that this will be done diplomatically. You know, people are not in a panic that, you know, everyone is calm and, and it's not to draw attention and to embarrass the person that is not feeling well.
All of the protocols have been reviewed and we'll continue to review them. There's nothing punitive and I've also stressed the importance that people recognize that students are entering a building after being out of a building for approximately six months. There's going to be a stress level for our students as well as our staff. And sometimes children are going to be fearful because of the adults around them and some of the things that they've heard adults say. And so a child could very easily walk into the school and be nervous. Perhaps they're going to cry. We have to be sensitive to that and that's certainly not a situation that would merit an isolation room. We've been very clear of what an isolation room is for. It's not just for someone who doesn't feel well. It's for someone who fits the definition of someone who could possibly have COVID-19. And that the protocol also calls for the parent being notified immediately. We've stressed the importance of having accurate telephone numbers. And we feel that Parent Square adds another layer to be able to communicate with parents quickly, not only by phone, but also by text and also by email. And that we have asked the schools to communicate to parents that when we call, they need to answer the phone call if it comes from a school immediately. Because sometimes that has also presented a delight. But we've been, that's why we have a debriefing at the end of every day with my staff and we're going to talk about any issues that we may have. But the isolation room is not a punitive room. It's not where you send somebody just because. And the nurse would have to determine whether that is someone that needs to go in the isolation room.
Okay. So Dr. Ruffin, Mr. President, just one, one, just a little bit more on this question. So my concern here is that once we even suspect that either a student or staff may be ill as a result of the virus, my concern is that they're not made to feel like they're poisoned. Has the staff reviewed what the prop, not, not even the isolation room? Let's say that they're not even there yet. You know, will, will the student, take that as example, be told to stand over there away from people, that sort of thing? Are we be, will the staff, have they been trained to be sympathetic as to not make the student or the staff member feel like they're poisoned?
Commissioner Superintendent in two districts, I find that you have to be very clear what the expectations are as the leader of the district so that people can learn by the example that you set. And so it's not my expectation that people are going to embarrass anyone. But I also know that we're dealing with lots of people and if the situation arises, I will be ready and prepared to confront it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Rocco Orso, I see your hand up. I think you're muted if you're talking.
How's that?
Beautiful.
Okay. I know in some circumstances, if, if somebody does come down with it. Has there been any communication made with the local hospitals to? You hear some horror stories. It takes seven days, 14 days to take a test to get a positive or negative test. Is any communication with the hospital or testing services get a quick turnaround? So the student or, or, or staff that might have it could get a quick turnaround instead of staying home for seven to 14 days?
Yes, we've actually had, I think, two facilities that will do a very quick turnaround, like within hours. And we have sent that out so people can know these are some sites that can do a rapid test. And then, of course, we know that the site that we have at, at PAL and also at Duggan, it takes them much longer. So we would not want to send someone there if it's something that needs to be determined quickly. But we have posted the, the two sites that we know of that, in, in Waterbury that can provide a rapid test results.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Commissioner Liz Brown?
Just a quick, quick question in terms of are we asking families to take their children's temperature at home before they come to school? Explicitly or we're just assuming that if their child is sick that they'll, they won't send them?
No, we're not asking anyone to take temperatures. What we're saying is if someone is ill, let them stay home. Because we also know that having a temperature or not having a temperature, you know, that's not an indicator that one would have COVID. But we do know if you have a temperature, you shouldn't come in, in school. But we have not said to anyone, you need to take your temperature before you come to school or to work. We have not said that to anyone.
Okay. Cause I know some of the preschool programs have advised that, so that's a different issue. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Anyone else have a question before we wrap up? Well, thank you, Dr. Ruffin. I don't see any more hands up there looking.
There's one more area for the, the meals. And if you will allow me just a little, we, we're going to be sending this out to everyone. It was just finalized today because it was one of the more complex pieces. And so very quickly to say what, what we're doing with that and then Will can, can, can add some more if he wants to. We're going to be providing meals. We have worked out the best process that we know how at this time to provide meals so that it minimizes the number of students that need to eat in the classroom or that need to eat in the cafeteria. But at the same time, it also provides a, a breakfast, a snack and a lunch for, for students who are in person as well as for students that are virtual that will need to come to one of several designated sites to pick up their breakfast, their lunch and, and their snack and then go back to home for continuous learning. So Will, you might want to add very quickly any updates to what I just said really fast.
Yeah, that, that's right, Dr. Ruffin. We, we did get some permission from the state to do a couple of things. One is have a snack during the school day. So we're able to do that snack sort of first thing early in the day. So kids can have something at the beginning of the day. And we also got a waiver to do the two meals together in a grab and go situation. So basically they'll get their lunch and tomorrow's breakfast at the end of the day. So this will allow us to maximize our learning time over those four hours, but still give them something at the beginning, which would be a snack. But it'll be a hearty snack and we'll put up the menu, a muffin and, or a cereal bar and so forth. So that'll give them something, but they'll also have that breakfast that we'll give them for tomorrow. So, you know, they could have that in the next morning also. So that grab and go will be the end of the day, snack at the beginning of the day. And as Dr. Ruffin said, we'll have a number of sites that will do that, that same grab and go to two meals from distribution sites geographically selected across the city. So we won't be doing all sites. We'll just be doing those about 10 sites. We'll see how that goes and if we need to add or delete, we can do that. But that's, that's how we'll start off.
Thank you. Dr. Ruffin, anything else you'd like to add in?
Not at this time. We're, we're excited and, and getting prepared for September the 8th.
Thank you. Commissioner Karen Harvey, do I see your hand up?
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. Thank you, Mr. President. Just one quick question. I thought about this afterwards. How are we handling, Dr. Ruffin? How are we handling the distribution of textbooks in a hybrid model?
Commissioner, textbooks right now are not top priority since the students have a computer and our instructional materials are electronic and they're provided on, on that platform. And we want students, once they come into schools, to be really familiar with the online platforms since that is going to be instrumental in moving our students forward over a long period of time.
All right. So Dr. Ruffin, that includes the early college students?
The early college students have a partnership. We have a partnership with Post University. And so we have a variety of different programs that could have differentiation. And I don't know whether a, a college that would, you know, that offers all online courses would really have a textbook that they would require the students at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm done.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else have a question before we start wrapping up? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin and, and for a very thorough overview. Hope this weekend is a smooth weekend. Our next agenda item is for your own reading pleasure. Item 10, superintendent's notification to the board. The teacher new hires, the resignations and the retirements that you can read at your leisure. And with that in play, I'd like to wish each and every one of you a healthy and safe Labor Day weekend. It's going to be a nice weekend otherwise. And we'll go further ado. Would someone please give me a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
At all at once. May I have a second? May I have an all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you, everyone. Have a great weekend.
Bye.
Bye bye.
All right. Good night.
Bye.